Welcome everyone to our town council meeting. Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Councilor Luddy. So, Pianessa. Councilor Russo. See you on June. Thank you. So, you're in order.
So, we now have our audience of citizens. If anyone is in the audience here, present or on our electronic media, welcome to speak to the council. Hello, somebody there? Hearing no one wants to speak during our audience of citizens, we'll but enclose the audience of citizens and move on to just a quick update on a couple of things I wanted to mention. Former mayor of our town, state rep, former police officer Bob Peters, unfortunately, wife passed away the other day.
He said you better unmute it.
Indolence is out to Bob and his family. And I just wanted to mention a couple of other things. With the recent, I guess, the crime issue does not seem to be going away. In fact, some of the events that fortunately recently even touched Berlin. The lady who was abducted and carjacked in Marlboro ended up in Berlin, you know, injured severely by her carjackers and burned car here in Berlin. The area town mayors, myself, Cromwell, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and Newington are again signing some petitions and trying to get some information sent to our, I think they're, I think they're gonna go to the governor and the legislature, I believe, to again ask for some help and some reforms on different things that I believe that should be done at the state level. I think we're also gonna request a meeting with the governor, the area mayors. So, we're working on that, but just to put that out there so you know, we are working to, maybe we could solve some of these problems. I think the other night, right, you had the officer in Farmington that was hit by the car, seriously injured, looks like he's gonna survive. I think they were stealing catalytic converters at that complex, but he got hit and trying to intervene in that. So, it's not going away. It's not getting, in fact, they seem to be more bold than what their approach is to steal cars or, and then now they're taking people with them to ATMs to take out money, in the case of the Marlboro lady, so. You need to pay attention to this on the state level, town level, we can only do so much, so we'll see how that goes. I wanted to mention at the, at the fair, which was well attended this weekend, it was great to be back at the Berlin Fair, but I was talking to Rain at the, from the Historical Society, and she just wanted me to mention that, you know, obviously, they have the Meeting House project that we're trying to get that renovated, and she's just wants to, you know, keep that out there and see if we could help them. I told her to speak to maybe Jim Mahoney, you know, see if there's any state grants. I know we've tried to help them out with that before. Just kinda keeping in everybody's mind, they're always looking for some, you know, donations to try and, they've, they've raised a bunch of money, but they need quite a bit more to begin with some renovations of the Meeting House and hopefully someday make it a definitely an attraction. People will come visit from out of town and also, you know, for us, maybe have meetings there if we need meeting spots. So, it's, you know, kind of the last historic building, well, there's others in town, but that, between that and the train station, those are two very important pieces of Berlin history. Unfortunately, the train station is gone, but the Meeting House is still there, and it's a very unique building. And we're lucky to have it in Berlin, so just keep that in mind. They, you know, from time to time are doing fundraisers and different things, and the town will help them. I told her as much as possible to help them with the project, so just keep that, your thoughts as we go forward with that. We had, just to mention, I mean, we were there, most, most of us, and had the meeting last week with the Board of Finance and the Town Council, just for the America Cares Act funding that we have. We have received $3 million to date, and we have another $3 million coming later in the year, and it was Kevin Delaney put on a great presentation for us about what, you know, what we could, what the guidance is from the, from the government, federal government, on how we could spend that money, and there are, you know, many, many, several projects in town that would fit the bill for that. Notably, probably the HVAC systems at some of the schools, that seems to be directly related. So, we have a little homework to do, but it was just a great kind of introduction to the guidance for the council and for the Board of Finance as we move forward into this year and look at the best way to utilize that, that funding, you know, in the best interest of Berlin and some of the projects that we have ongoing. So, we'll be studying that further and, you know, we wanna, I guess with the guidance, we did learn that we wanna make sure that with the guidance they've given us, the projects that we may choose in the future, that, you know, they would be directly related to, to what they have authorized us to use it for, because obviously, if you use that funding and you have to then seek approval, you could need to pay it back. So, we gotta make sure we avoid that as we go forward. And again, we got some good guidance from Kevin Delaney, and we'll, you know, be working on that in the next, in the next year, so. And that's it for my comments with that. We're gonna move on to our meeting agenda with our consent agenda. We have the four topics. We have donations for the library. Wave the special event fee for the St. Paul Church Fair Garden Annual Picnic, fee waiver of $385 allowing one police officer patrol the Berlin Fire Department Jeep Show, and accept the donation of flower boxes built by Eagle Scout Tyler Barber, support projects by our elementary school blast program students located at Willard. So, we've all reviewed this, reviewed the agenda, and go ahead and take a motion.
Sure, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second on that?
I second it.
Any comments or questions from the counselors? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So moved. So, on to our meeting agenda.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. There was Councilor Russo, he's having a difficult time hearing. He's asking if he could speak to the mic. Hopefully, he can hear me. You can turn up the volume more, right? Eight? That's it?
Yeah.
No, no, he can't hear me. I know you can hear me.
Oh, he can't hear?
He's having, Peter Russo.
No, no, he can't hear me, but not.
Jeff, can you hear us? Attorney De Nofio.
I can hear you. It's not, I have my volume turned all the way up, and it's still kinda faint.
Thank you.
You wanna keep, go, keep going?
I can just about hear.
We have that problem last time?
Yeah, but there was something.
Something different? Could yell. Nice for the people in the audience.
Can you hear me, Jeff? How about that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. I'll just speak right into the mic. See if that would help. So, the first item on the agenda is a free and plaque donation from New Britain Rotary Club. And I have Steve Wood to present the agenda item. Steve, you're on.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. So, years ago, the Berlin used to have a Rotary Club, which now has merged with New Britain. So, this year is their 100th anniversary, and they wanted to do something to commemorate it of all the 100 towns in the state that have a Rotary Club, and their idea was all, all the Rotary Clubs to donate trees. Their primary thing is doing scholarships, so we thought doing the plaque and tree at Willard School in front where they can go out and do some readings for the pre-K in the kindergarten class would be great. We have accepted donations from like the Kensington Garden Club for benches, the gazebo at Veterans Park, the pavilion at Sage Park from other organizations, and also by talking to the principal, Megan Saroyes, at Willard School. She's really excited for this tree.
Great, thanks, Steve. There's no questions, we're gonna go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve accepting a five inch by seven inch plaque celebrating Rotary's 100 years of service to the community valued at $220 and a 10-foot pink dogwood valued at $400 to be planted in front of Willard School by the Parks and Rec Department.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Great. Congratulations for your 100-year anniversary, and we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so moved.
Right, thank you. Second item on the agenda is a monthly rental of portable restrooms utilizing the state contract. Steve?
This is really exciting. These are the porta potties that are located all of our playgrounds, ball fields, and anywhere that does not have a public restroom.
Okay, that's a fascinating topic. Yes, very interesting. Have any questions on the porta potty rentals? No? Oh, okay. We'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
Sure. I move to approve the issuing of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $18,000 utilizing the Department of Administrative Services contract 18 PSX 0182AA in fiscal year 2122 for United Site Services Northeast Inc. for the weekly cleaning and maintenance of 13 portable restrooms.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Close. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
You have a great night, everybody.
Night.
Night, Steve.
Third item on the agenda is approve the donation from the Kensington Fire Department of a drone valued at $4,623. Jim? All right. You would have to come to the podium here, please, so that others could hear.
Hi, Jeff Bager. I'm the chief of Kensington Fire. I'll just speak very briefly. Donation amount is about $4,600. We had received, we had looked around for the last couple of years for a donation to purchase a Mavic drone. It's a public safety drone specifically designed for, for our type of operation, thermal imaging cameras, got some other fancy things on it. And we were able to get that, to get that done, and the first use of it actually was the, the gentleman who was lost off of Fairview. We did deploy it that day and did, did quite a bit of searching with it, so.
Oh, that's great. Nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks. Jeff, while you're here, before you leave, before you leave, let's, let's just take a motion on this. And then I have another question for you while you're up here.
From?
Okay. I move to approve the donation from the Kensington Fire Department of a drone valued at $4,623.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other questions or comments or? Hearing nothing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, so moved. Um, we had, we've had a couple of discussions. It's come up before about your parking lot, so just give us a, just give you the Minute? Yeah, just
10,000-foot view? So, the parking lot project for us started probably back in 2017-ish, 17, 18. I had approached, the driveway's been having issues, you know, for a while, and I had approached Joe Orson Woods at the time. And we had had a pretty lengthy conversation down at the firehouse and had talked about potentially getting some state monies, bonded monies, you know, to, to get the parking lot done. The parking lot is large. It's simply something we are unable to do on our own. And so, I was looking for, for his help to get a grant of some kind donation, so that, that began a few-year process of some back and forth. Unfortunately, at the time, the state was, was having more issues, and some of the bonding and stuff wasn't being used for anything but other, other purposes. So, we really weren't able to push that, push that home. We've kind of gotten by, thankfully, with the help of assistance with the town. They've done some cold patching over the years. We've been able to patch larger potholes. Unfortunately, the driveway probably originally, we're, we're pretty sure the, the base layer is probably from the early 70s, and it was probably repaved in the 80s at some point, so it's, it's extremely old. Our largest vehicle is 88,000 pounds driving over that, that driveway for the past, you know, whatever, 30, 40 years. It's just, it's, it's, it's no longer serviceable. We have had a few quotes kicked around over the years. Stuff has gone up, so we started in 2017. Quotes were a little lower. Things have gone up. You know, I think we're in the $115,000 range, approximately 115 to 120, I think, with, with some little bit of contingency maybe, but. And then again, when Donna took, took, took over, I approached her and just said, hey, this is what we were working on. I'd love to work with you on it and try to get it I don't, you know, wherever we can get the money at that point. We, we addressed, we discussed with the town concerns about the wetlands. If we stick with the existing footprint, there's no concerns. If we, if we look at some other areas, there was one other little spot off to the side. We were contemplating paving. There would be some additional environmental things, but I don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go down that road right now. The there's a spot towards the lower portion of the driveway that actually, when the trails back there were discussed, about 10 years ago, and some of that was actually started, there was some discussion about actually paving that as well to use that as additional parking for townspeople to come in, be able to have a parking lot on the side they can pull in, walk. Maybe, maybe, you know, some of it could be visiting some of the businesses on Farmington Avenue as well. It, it doesn't interfere with our operation, which is mostly up in front. So, that, that might be a future piece. For now, we obviously wanna, you know, fix the, replace the existing, the existing structures. When we, yeah, when we started this, like I said, now, almost five years ago, you know, the driveway was really in, 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 in not good shape. We've had some patching and things like that, so we've, we've been able to extend that life, but I, I think we're at the end. And, and as soon as we get a, a snowstorm, you know, most of that cold patch gets tore out, and it really, really becomes a mess. So, environmentally, though, there's, there's no concerns about.
All right. Well, I know we talked a little bit about the, I think, another council meeting, and I know we're gonna do some work at South Kensington. At the, I mean, we own that building. It's a town building, but hopefully, you know, we did, obviously, we have a surplus this year, right? We approved about $1 million worth of capital purchases last time, as did the Board of Finance, and there's still, I'm sure with the, I think it was about 800,000 left. I think it was 1.8 million, right, we heard, I think, last time? With that in mind, and, you know, with the COVID money, not that the COVID money would fit for the this, but, you know, as we go forward this year, I, I would think as we get into the budget and see what, you know, funding we have that we can use COVID funds, which would leave us with, obviously, you know, that things get paid for COVID money that, that are appropriate under, under the guidance, and maybe there's other funding we can.
Just, just, just one additional note, too. We had, I had approached Marjorie Moore. I've approached them on a few things over the years, but, but this particular one, we did ask them for fundage approximately two years ago. We got about $10,000, but we do have, we can offer that aside. Set aside. It was specifically from Marjorie Moore. I'd asked for more, and I was hoping for, you know, a substantial amount, but unfortunately, they, they were able to give, that's what they were able to give, so. We do have some of that. With a little bit of contingency, again, not knowing what we uncover when we, when we, when we, when we take that up, you know, that's, that's the only issue, so.
All right, so I think, you know, as we go forward, maybe with the budget year and, and see how things go and what, what we have in our next year's budget, we can certainly look at this, chief, and
Thank you.
see what we could do. Go on, kinda agree with that. See, see how we can help out, obviously. I can speak on the next item, too.
Sure.
If Jimmy's okay with that. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next one, it's agenda item number four. It's purchase a caterpillar stand-by generator to be used at the Elwood Communications Site utilizing Sourcewell Contract. Jeff, you're, you're?
Thank you. So, this is a culmination of almost, almost a year and a half work on the radio communications project for the Fire Department. I will say it was extremely intensive. There was a lot of time put into this project to make a very favorable outcome for us and for the town. You have a tremendous product. I am extremely proud of it. I know, working with Jim Simons on this, he's extremely proud of it. Our members are extremely proud of it. It works very well. We've had a lot of just, you know, new technology and things like that that we never had before. This is one of the last pieces of that project. This is a generator to provide, obviously, power, you know, backup, electrical backup at Elwood Road. The top of Elwood Road is our primary site. This would, would obviously provide power to the shelter that we have there. We have a, you know, actually, an old Nextel shelter, but it's a basically a concrete hut for all intents and purposes, about 25 by 12 in, in, in size. And this would provide power backup. That's our primary site. We do have two other sites, South Kensington and Berlin Fire. This also, if in the future we move the Police Department, who has a site up there, into that building, would also provide protection for them as well for, from a backup perspective. So, if power is out for an extended period, I'm not talking, you know, 30 minutes, I'm talking three days, that type of thing, so. It's a, it's a diesel generator. We have the ability to fill that diesel on, on demand, pretty much, so. This is a, kind of the, the clinch pin of the, of the project to get everything, to get everything wrapped up.
Okay, thanks for that. Thanks for all the hard work to get your communications up to speed, as well as the, I know, the Police Department system. We've also placed that and updated that to current standards, and certainly, there's no more critical time that we need our repeaters and transmitters up when there's a public disaster and there's no power, so. Pretty much a no-brainer in my mind, but, so, any comments or questions on this? And if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the purchase of one generator from HO Penn utilizing the Sourcewell Contract number 120617 FCAT for an amount not to exceed $28,111.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So moved.
All right, thank you.
Get your generator. Fine, keeping us safe. We know you will. Appreciate it.
Right. We're gonna have Mr. Simons come over for this. This is the approve the purchase of tires for the town of Berlin fleet from various vendors utilizing state, state of Connecticut contract.
I'm not sure which is more exciting, in the outhouses or the tires.
Both exciting.
Tires might be pretty important.
In the tires' role, outhouses shouldn't.
Very good, very good, yes.
I can talk directly into there. I'm very loud, they tell me. So, this is the yearly contractor, yearly awarding the purchases of tires. Usually, we do it through local vendors utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS contract. We are doing that again for Goodyear tires and Firestone or Bridgestone tires. We use a series of other tires throughout the fleet, Uniroil, Michelin, and the list goes on. There is government pricing on those, in which we would be using the government pricing and work through Sullivan and DiPietro Tire for those. So, it's really, it depends on, on who has availability, what the tire is, where it's gonna go. Is it a pursuit-rated tire? Is it a Michelin that's on a fire truck, or whatever it is, is where we're going to purchase it. But we're utilizing the stated contract, the state of Connecticut DAS contract for a portion of that, and we're using government pricing for the other portion of that, and that's really about it.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Jim? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Sure. I move to approve the purchase of tires and related components using, utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS Contract number 18PSX 00022 for Goodyear tires and Bridgestone tires and off-brand tires utilizing the government pricing provided by the manufacturers from Connecticut Tire, Sullivan Tire, and DiPietro Tire. An amount not to exceed $35,000 is, this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moved. Thanks, Jim.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Agenda item number six is a contract award to Jaccunzi Humes Architects LLC for the Police Department locker project. Mike?
Evening.
Mike?
I'm here actually representing the PBC and I guess indirectly the Police Department. The PBC was referred the expansion and renovation of locker room facilities by the Town Council in May. They directed staff, after they reviewed the information from the Police Department and Police Commission, they directed us to get a proposal from Jaccunzi Humes, who's also done work for the PD in the past down that space. So, we got a proposal from them to do a master plan, which will actually, they have to step back and figure out where the, the new locker rooms would go. So, they have to do actually a master plan involving some additional storage space downstairs, then do a schematic master plan of the entire space that the PD has available, when the first phase would be the locker room. So, I'll do like a more intensive schematic design of that space, also get cost estimates for that, and also do a final report from Jaccunzi Humes. That proposal is totals to $25,000, and it's, it's basically phased, so the PBC, the Public Building Commission, can stop at any point. For example, if they think they don't need a professional cost estimate, they can save $6,000 and say, well, we'll, whatever it is afoot. So, it's sort of a phased approach to this project. So, the PBC is looking for a max of $25,000 to get to Kunske Ums to go and, and update the existing space needs and site assessment, do the schematic design, do the professional cost estimate, and the final report, which will be summarizing all of that work.
Yeah, I've been talking about that for a while. It's another, another great update to the Police Department. We've done several over the last few years, so it's good to go on on this one. Are, are they gonna, do we know yet? I know we don't know this is what the study's for, but the current locker rooms, I know, I think the female officers locker room is, needs to be maybe expanded, is that?
Both do.
Both do, right?
In fact, I think the females, the female locker room is in better shape than the male locker room. And I've learned a lot during this process. They actually have drying components for their body armor. They have, they need actually electrical outlets for their rechargeable batteries and their flashlights. And they, they need a lot of space. These things are not just like little, you know, high school lockers. These are actually pretty big, and they have all their stuff in it, so. It's, it's not just like a locker room that you would think, you know, just visualize. It's, it's a lot, lot more involved, a lot more space is needed.
And you have the space, I take it?
They, I think there's additional space that the BOE, Port of Ed, is actually going to be.
So, we're gonna go
Yeah, and that's, that's actually why Jaccunzi Humes, they did a master plan before.
I, I remember that.
This is another This is another chunk of space that became available, so that actually changes their whole approach.
Okay, okay.
That's sort of why they have to kind of step back, oh, we have the space, what can we do with the whole PD space? And then where do the locker rooms fit into that and start that rolling?
Yeah, okay, right. So we're gonna finally look at that extra space that we had, we know, know was there.
Yeah.
It's that storage room, right? Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, okay.
There's, there's been discussions about some other organizations that use that space and how that trickles into this whole project. And that's already been raised to a roche at a meeting, and I was at that meeting, too. Doug Pruitt actually came to me and said, just so you know, we have stuff down there, where's it gonna go? So that has to be factored into this whole, you know, reorganization.
We figured out where it's gonna go?
Yeah.
Yeah, space though in buildings, right? I can dominate this stuff? No? Pistol Creek's empty. Pistol Creek. Right, too far away?
I would wait for the experts to give some advice, yes.
I'm sure we could come up with space to store stuff. All right, well, I'm glad this is moving forward, that's good, it's been a long time coming, so it's good. Questions for Mike? Are we none, go ahead and take a motion?
Okay, I move to waive the bidding process and award Jekunski Humes Architects LLC of Berlin, Connecticut, a contract to provide architectural design and cost estimating services for the police department locker room renovation project, an amount not to exceed $25,000. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any comments or questions at this point?
So would they be set the power for, right?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved. All right.
Thank you, agenda item number seven, is a purchase of an ass called hot box trailer for the highway department. This is more exciting than porta potty and the top.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, the highway department, and a lot of highway departments have this already, so I think this is long overdue, particularly for repairs in the winter. This is an a hot box trailer that has an insulated and heated, a hopper for the material, it holds up to three tons, the one that we've selected. The highway department, I gotta give credit to Steve Carp and Danny St. Char, they did a lot of research, took two of these units that they were looking at out in the field and tested them with the crew. And the winner, both on price and on the feedback from the the field, is the KM 6,000. I included a summary table which shows that the quotes for this size hot hot box trailer ranges from about 28 to 32,000 and change. And when I, I was actually surprised, when I factored in all of the units and what was included, what were additional for the different quotes, it was actually pretty competitive. So I think if we did a a public bid, it would have been pretty close to what we got, what got here. So I think it's, it's a good comparison for the town. This unit will hold three tons of asphalt. It can, if they, the crew needs an extra day, it can be held overnight, you can actually timer with the diesel burner, so we can actually go in the garage and just keep that material hot, reduces asphalt waste because in the winter, if they throw a ton or two in the dump truck and they just, they, you know, the two streets down, boom, it just, as some of you know, it'll just, it'll just freeze up and they'll have to just discard it. So I think this is a great, particularly for the winter, so they can use hot mix rather than cold patch. So with that, we're recommending that you approve the purchase of the KM 6,000 T E D D for 20, just under $28,000. We'd like to have the P O not to exceed 30 in case something comes up when we go to order. And I think that's actually a good choice for the town to make at this time.
Okay, well, it's always good for roads in the best shape we can, especially in the winter, it's always tough, we know that, so. It's good, any questions for Mike? Are we none, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Okay, I move to waive the bidding process and approve issuing a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to Craftco Inc. of Millbury, Mass. from the highway equipment and paving box accounts, the purchase of an asphalt hot box trailer for the highway department, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any additional comments? Are we none? What on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Agenda item number eight is a discussion item. It's about indoor mask mandate. Executive order 30 N, which was issued by the governor on August 5th. Provides municipal leaders the option of requiring masks in indoor public places, you know, for your respective town, so in this case, Berlin. And if implemented, the requirement would apply all people, businesses, regardless of vaccination status, you wear a mask. So it's out there, I think it's appropriate to have a discussion at this time. I'm not asking for you to make a decision, but a couple of people have asked, so I thought it's good to bring to the council.
Now, we explained our mask policy last time, right? I mean, mainly for.
The town hall.
Town hall. That it's suggested but not required, and to keep, obviously, our town employees safe, right, if they want to.
Again, be clear. Town staff are required to wear it inside.
They are, yes.
They meet, whether they're, if they're less than six feet apart from one another.
Less than six feet.
And if you are not vaccinated, CDC requires you to wear a men mask anyway, whether you're six feet apart or not.
Oh.
But for the guest, just so that the staff does not have to deal with the hassle of arguing and fighting with folks, we have said it is highly recommended or suggested. And nine out of the 10 times, they're all wearing a mask when they come in.
Yeah.
Arusha, is that at the recommendation of C C H D?
The suggestion or which one? The town policy?
Recommendation?
Yeah, CDC, Department of Public Health, and our local health district have asked us to do that. So hence, we rule that out for the town hall.
Yeah, for the town hall.
The suggested language is mine, just to keep the peace.
Yeah, and.
Appreciate that.
It's been working well, I take it.
For now, yes.
For now. And I don't, I don't think Berlin, right, is, I don't know what the, it is, I know you sent some statistics to us a while ago, and I don't think we're anywhere so off. Are we with our infection rates, our vaccination rates? I hope we're going up, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we are not, I mean, we were.
A hundred percent.
The red zone a couple of weeks ago, I think we're back now to, so, you know, when you, it's measured per 100,000 people, right? And so when you break it down per day for a two week period, it turns around two people, it's been up to four people a day, now it's back to like three people a day. So do the math. And that's fairly consistent with what we see at Rocky Hill, Livingston, and by this feel, you know, one week we're up, one week the other town is down. And that's the data that I have, because they're all part of the same health district.
I mean, I do know in town, many businesses, you know, have signs on their businesses, if you come in, please wear a mask, I think Stop and Shop has it today. Many, many businesses, restaurants the other day had it. Some don't, some do. I don't know, I haven't heard any overriding comments from the public. It seems to be working, and the businesses I've gone into, if there's a sign on the door, please wear a mask, I have noted, everybody in the business has a mask on, I mean, members of the public, as well as the employees. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, it's not, you know, it's up, it's up to the town. Governor has seen fit to leave it up to the town. We towns a little bit different, obviously. So, what do you all think?
Like, I can share that I'm for masking in in any place that's indoor, whether it's a restaurant or retail, a municipal building. No, I, I know that there's some people that say, oh, you know, no need to wear one if you're not vaccinated, but I'm not certain that everybody is necessarily transparent about whether or not they're vaccinated. So, no, I think that during this time and when we have the Delta variant, there's really no harm in it, so I would like to see it.
Okay.
Mandated throughout the town.
Okay. Else, comments?
I'm okay with the, the way that a roche has it set up at town hall, I think it works well in the town, going by the Central Connecticut Health District guidance, I guess about, you know, unvaccinated, wear a mask. Vaccinated, you know, if you're within a certain amount of feet, you should wear a mask, but the guidance that they provide, I'm pretty good with that. Follow that guidance, I think it's pretty sound.
We.
Seems to be working, and the sign is up, if you're vaccinated, you know, some businesses should wear a mask if you enter their establishment, I think if people want to, they need to wear a mask, but that's how the owners have it posted.
I'm on the same boat, I don't think it should be a mandate, want to wear a mask, wear a mask. To mandate it on businesses, I think they're making that choice on their own. And suggestion is is fine with me. I don't know, I just, I don't think it's worth going down that road right now.
It should be a free country, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, if you don't.
Um.
It's your business.
Yeah. I wonder, I wonder if we could just, you know, maybe we somehow reiterate to the public just those, kind of what we, you know, have said, maybe just, so they, obviously, if we have no mandate, but just that, hey, if, you know, depending upon your business or up to the businesses, but, you know, reiterate the the six foot space is important to keep that, you know, if you can, in whatever business you may be in or indoor spot. I'll just kind of reiterate, you know, that to them and best you can, I mean, our rates were, you know, out of control, they don't seem to be, and I know they they're flipping back and forth all over the state, all over the country, I guess, so. Don't see any urgency to this. I mean, it's, guidance is always back and forth as well, right? I think at one point, you know, some guidance that came out a little while ago was even if you were vaccinated, you need to wear a mask, which if we go back to six or eight months ago, if you were vaccinated, you didn't need a mask, so it goes, it's all over the place, you know, for whatever reason, from health professionals, and, you know, then it all turns political as well, which is a shame, but that's just how it is. But if it's working well, I I have heard no individual complaints from anyone in town, myself personally, no emails or, like I say, it seems like many of the businesses I've gone in do have a sign on the door in Berlin to wear a mask, and say the ones I've gone into, they, the people, the members of the public are wearing a mask, so. They seem to be, you know, definitely listening to what the businesses want in their establishment, and we have our town hall covered, so. You know, I would say we let it, let it continue that way for now and see what happens as we get into the fall. I guess, you know, nobody knows, you know, good or bad, what's gonna happen, hopefully it's headed in the right direction.
Well, that's just it, though, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen, so, so if there's a preventative aspect.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're pushing the vaccines, I hope, you know, I hope the vaccination rates are going up, I don't know, do we have that? And do we know in town how, if they've moved up at all in the last six months? We don't have those statistics yet.
Well, I mean, after what I shared with you, I haven't received anything.
I have anything new.
Yeah, so we'll probably get one by the end of this month, early October.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would think it has gone up and that.
Yeah. Like they've been pushing pretty hard to, you know.
Getting close to the mid seventies.
Okay, okay. I think everybody over 65 in Berlin is higher, right?
Over 65, a hundred percent.
Hundred percent, okay. All right.
We get the price for that from all the towns.
That's great, no, that's, that's fantastic, that's great. So I I would say we monitor it closely, monitor the infection rates and the vac, if we could get some new figures on the vaccination rates, maybe in October or in the end of October, probably into the, this quarter, something will come out, so, and then go from there. Seems to be the general census. I hear you, I hear you, Joanne, I think we should, but definitely monitor and bin eye on it. Okay, so we don't have any motion on that, so, okay, so I would, if we could just hold off on those appointments, a couple of people were supposedly gonna send in, again, applications to the observation commission, and they, they saw one of them at the Berlin Fair, I said, please get it in, so if we could just wait one more meeting and take a look at whoever sends one in, I would appreciate that. And that. Where are we at here? Town manager's report, how could I forget, how could I not know that's next?
I'll keep it brief this time. We have a agenda on the executive committee, so I have two items I just want to talk to you about. One has to do with the town farm lane, our complex. You saw the pictures we sent you when it was flooded.
Oh, yeah.
In September, early September, beginning of September. And it, and a lot of the folks who have lived in this town, all people that work.
Oh, my God, guys.
Times have changed, you know, the Kennedys are fucking everything that was moving, and they were everybody's hero, because they got the.
All right. Getting back to the town farm lane, the flood. So when I saw that, I was a little bit shocked to say that, you know, what I saw, it's built in a flood plain, it was done probably 80 years ago or so, so only five, 80 years ago, and it was pretty harsh to see, you know, people walking, you know, there was raw sewer and water coming from the pipes, and it's all inside offices and break rooms and lockers that people love. So we had a point that we need to do a, assess what's inside those walls to see if there's any mold developing. And so we're working on a plan within the next couple of weeks to try and get into those walls. It is a massive project, because you have to remove some of the equipment and whatever we have close to those sheet rock walls, not where the concrete is, to get in there and assess the damage. And then also, we are working on, we have a couple of ideas, which I will share next time perhaps, on how we might be able to do a different kind of a solution rather than putting back sheet rock. So that even if the, if it's flooded in the future, and I believe it's gonna happen more often now, we we won't have that much of a issue with mold and poor working conditions. You know, the the solution to move the entire complex out of there would be a massive one, should cost millions of dollars, so.
And where would it go?
Pistol Creek.
Oh, Pistol Creek again.
Thing, yeah.
Coming back up, Pistol Creek, Pistol Creek. On one of the fairways, maybe, a couple of the fairways, we can move it.
So just, we'll come back to you, I'm sure we'll have some expenses related to that. Again, that's, you know, insurance, since it's in a flood plain, it's not.
And.
And go for it, we are not supposed to be there to begin with, like Tim would say. So just F I I, but we'll, we'll come back to you with what's going on with that.
Yeah, I want to keep our employees safe, I'm just curious if, I don't know, Jim or anyone, it's like over the la, I know, we know it's flooded throughout our lifetimes in Berlin here, but like, what, on average, have an average of how many times, I don't know, five year period it floods?
Every five years, right, Tim? At different levels, Mike?
Doesn't, okay. Or 30 years. I mean, when it floods, it's horrible, yeah, understandable, and I'm sure the building is, you know, not, we definitely need to check it out, but. I'm just curious of the the frequency.
Yeah.
Yeah. One time there was a proposal to put a fuel station at the golf course to back up the town garage in case it was flooded. Did that ever happen?
So from the complex, while he's walking up there, the garage where Jimmy is, the salt side and the facility is building this, they, they survived somehow. They're in a high elevation.
Okay.
The parks and grounds and the highway and the remainder that, you know, goes under. Right, Jim?
Correct. So the garage is out of the water area. So the funding for the, uh, remote fill station at the golf course is still in the bank and it has not moved forward. It was a project that we were working on, but change of employment, uh, that it fell by the wayside a little bit. Tanks are still down there at the garage, still have that stuff in stock or at our disposal.
You think it would be a good idea to, is that true?
I, I think that it's, it's a good idea. I think that we need to, uh, find out what exactly is going to happen with the golf course before we invest in it. But, yeah, I think that to put a second fuel insight on that side of the town would not only help us in the event that they're flooding, but it would also help us for. We'll just take the South Kensington Fire Department or the power trucks that are out in that area. They could fuel there instead of running all the way back to the garage. And even the, even the police officers that are patrolling out that area, they could fuel there and then instead, instead of running back to the garage before they come to the police department. I think that it is a positive idea, um, to get it off the shelf and moving again. Think that, uh, something to look at.
So, emergency wise, that certainly makes sense. So with that flood that, you know, I mean, there was a lot of rain, but, but do, do we, I mean, we're looking at the weather. Do we move stuff out of there that may be impacted by it? Is there stuff we can move or is it just stuck there when the?
So the Steve Wood, Steve Karp, uh, those individuals that are in the flooded areas, they begin moving things out of there early.
Yeah.
The equipment's moved, the, the mowers are moved, the hand equipment, all that's moved. We do have the limited, uh, fuel site that's at the golf course now, so that we fill up all the emergency vehicles over there.
Okay.
But we try to, we try to drain the tanks down as much as we can.
Okay.
Put it in there, into the vehicles. Cause we know that there's, it's not that the fuel site is down, it's that the fuel site, whoever's filling them needs to have hit boots. Cause the pump, cause the pumps are on top of the tanks and, and that's all taken care of.
Okay, yeah.
You just have to.
You can't get, may not be able to get to it with the vehicle, right? Yeah.
We have portable tanks that we can roll in there on, in the bucket of a payloader, fill them up and then bring them out to the street and then. Look if we have to.
So in this.
We try to be proactive when the storm's coming. Move the equipment out of there, make sure that things are full of fuel, make sure that we have fuel at the golf course for the, the police cars. They can go to the golf course and fuel up out there.
So in this last one, which was pretty significant, I mean, I haven't seen him on that.
So it was, I can't say it was, was the worst one. I've seen it a lot worse.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it was a moderate.
But we, aside, you know, looking at the building, which is very important, and I have, uh, boys working in a moldy area, that's very, that's not good, but like, did we lose any? Did we come out of it? I'm just curious.
I'm not, I, I don't know what. Wood or Steve Karp have in the back there that they came out of it.
I true.
Loss. Um, I know that for. He did not have, um, did not have a loss of equipment.
Okay.
And everything that was run through the water has been in the garage and we've drained the oils and the gear oils and everything else. Checked all that stuff, so we don't have problems in the future. You don't know about their buildings and their lunch areas.
Right.
That stuff.
All right, I'm just curious. Thanks, thanks for the info.
Yep, thank you. The second item is, um, next week I will have Tony Capola, uh, will be coming to talk to you. I, all of you have a copy of this called the Planning for the Affordability in Connecticut Affordable Housing Plan and Process Guidebook. Um, I'm sure you'll read it back to back, but, uh, if, in case you don't get to it, uh, read page number nine.
Just, that's the page.
That's a paragraph.
Focus on that.
It talks about the need to establish a committee, uh, and to be, um, led by an elected official. There are more to come on that. But I just want to get you this document that when Jennifer, um, she'll probably join, uh, via Zoom, walk us through, um. What we ought to be doing because the report is due next June first, June first, twenty twenty-two. We have some time, but not a whole lot of time. All right. That's all I have for today.
That's it. Um, can I add one thing to your report? I, I mentioned it to you, so. Britain Transportation, uh, Peter approached me, owner of it. Um, so like every other town, we're, we're having trouble with, with bus drivers. Obviously, it's a statewide problem. And not to mention, there's a, one of the mandates from the governor is to make sure all the bus drivers are vaccinated by the end of September, which is causing them a little bit of a problem too. Try, trying to get it done, obviously, but they may lose some people with that for whatever reason. So he asked me if, so a while ago, uh, over the years, he's parked a, a bus, um, on that part of Sage Park on the turnpike with the sign, you know, bus drivers needed. So he asked me if, uh, do we, and, and we, you know, really don't want to put anything on that property, cause then it, you know, if he does it, everyone else does it. But this is really in the interest of the town. He asked me if we would allow him for, for, you know, up to thirty days, or he said, whatever you could do. He said, that's been in, in the past anyway, I know, maybe it's different, he didn't, he doesn't know, but. Talking about it, he said, it's been very successful. It's a busy, obviously, highway, the turnpike and with, with a sign for bus drivers needed. See if he could, uh, get some more applicants, so, um. What do you guys think about that? Again, really, it's to help us. We've already, I think, had to combine some routes in, in town because of the lack of bus drivers with, with his company. So he's just trying to, uh, you know, obviously get more drivers and service Berlin the best that he can, which has not been the best right now because of that issue. What do we think? Consensus? I mean, I, I, you know, I don't, what are we thinking about that? Limited period for limited purpose. Yes. It's for the best of the, it's for the town, yeah.
What do you guys, what do you think?
For time? All right. Right. But, so what do we think, uh, do we have him? A minimum, an email that this is what he's asking and what, how do we?
I just want to, um, clarify about the process because the last time we took it out because. I had requested, uh, they were possibly, you know, if there's a chance that they could be leaking oil or something like that. So, uh, one is if, if they're planning to put a sign there, are they bringing back a vehicle? If that's the case, do we want, require them to have some protective measure down there? That's one. Second one, um, we put signs there saying, you know, you do this again, we're going to tow you and, uh. Because other people are parking there, including, uh, Ocean State Job Lot. So. If somebody else comes. Do we bring it back to council? Because there's no internal process right now.
Uh, uh.
You should establish a process.
I, I think we've got to establish a process. That doesn't help him immediately, but I, but I agree going forward. If we could come up with a process, I mean, for now, if we come to the council, if somebody comes up with it, and I, I guess, you know, Ocean State or. I can't think of another, no, I mean, I'm sure there's another reason I can't come up with it, but this is, you know, pretty directly related to our, our town, you know, why we're allowing it. It's really for the, the good of the town and the safety of our bus routes and our, and our school system, so, but agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we should have some, come up with some type of.
I mentioned about the process because it probably won't have some kind of a second balance on the content too.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
Somebody parks then, they could be advertising something. It's again on.
Agreed.
Common property.
Right.
It's on town.
Town property, right, yeah.
So if, if they are putting signs that could be offensive to someone, I'm just talking to the bus drivers.
No, 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 I know.
Broadly, um, or if you want to treat it as a one-off and just do it once, and I, I don't know what the reaction is going to be from other.
Right.
Somebody else who might want to.
Sure.
Something in there.
It directly benefits, like you're saying.
Yeah, it's.
So if it's a business that does that.
Right.
Maybe that's the.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, we'll have to see how we write something and Mr., uh, Corporation Counsel, what do you, what do you think about this?
Having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, no, okay, well, we'll start yelling some more. Um, so, uh, so we want to allow, so on town property. Off the Berlin Turnpike, we wanted to allow our, uh, bus company who is desperately looking for bus drivers and. We've already had some issues with, um, you know, having combined bus routes apparently for, for, uh, the Berlin School System. So he wants to park, uh, a bus there. He's done this in the past. We really don't allow, haven't allowed it anymore, but he wants to, up to a thirty day timeframe with a help wanted sign. And these would be for bus drivers for the Berlin School System for, for his contract with us. We want to allow him to do it, but of course, we're worried that that would open the floodgates for anybody, of course, town property there. We don't want everybody parking something there, just advertising whatever they want it, or any other sign with offensive language or whatever language, you know, we, 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 we don't want to. Start something here, but for a very short, limited time, we'd like to allow him to do it. He asked us, cause it was very successful for him in the past, busy road and, uh, highly visible.
Well, I'd want to do a limited license with some indemnity and insurance requirements in it. Nothing, nothing to elaborate, a one-page, simple license that we can terminate upon, uh, upon your decision to do so.
Okay. Can you, uh, look something up like that fairly quickly?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And, uh, and then we could also figure out for the future, at least we have that, as some type of go-by to get going and let him, uh, get his advertisement out there and. We'll go from there. I, I hope it doesn't open the floodgates, but again, pretty, pretty limited purpose for, for a, uh, you know. Best interest of the town, obviously, is what we're doing, not to promote some business or anything else. So I think we, you know, justify that, obviously.
Would come back to, I think that property was cleaned up, right? It's remediation some time ago.
Did that remediate that property?
Was that never remediated? I thought it did. All right.
It's not completed, okay.
But let's not add to it.
I, I think he said he would, you know, do whatever we want, but he would park a smaller bus, maybe not a full-size bus there with the sign on it, which obviously draws more attention. If he puts, um, you know, something underneath to catch whatever oil or might drip off that bus, is that helpful?
Yes, helpful.
Will it stop? I mean, I mean, it's going to stop if you put, I don't know what he would. Yeah, a drip pan or even a full, I don't know what he would have to put under the whole chat. It's going to be the, you know, one of the. Yeah. Yeah, if we can include something like that for this specific purpose, that to make sure, you know, nothing, uh. Trips off the bus or however, put it more eloquently than that, obviously, but, uh, whatever we can do, and he would, I'm sure be willing to do that. And again, it would not be a large, a full-size school bus, it'd be a shorter bus. Not to damage the property anymore, then it's probably already damaged, but. That make sense, Jeff?
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
To clarify, so is it the bus company that would be pulling the, the, um, the permit or whatever the license?
Yes.
Yes.
At their expense, obviously.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, you know, if you, you said, you know, it might open up floodgates, but if it were to.
And have to apply.
Anybody else would have to do.
That's right.
Abide by the same.
Correct, yeah, that, that's what would stop, just someone want to advertise a tag sale, or, you know, whatever they want to do. Yeah.
I'll connect with you tomorrow, Jeff.
Okay. Yep, I just need some details.
It's good, appreciate that. Yeah, that'll, you know, like I said, he, he'll appreciate it, and I guess we'd say thirty days is what he, would be the outside. He said that'd be great if he could do thirty days or less, he'll take whatever he gets, you know, so anyway, appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so where we at? I don't think there's any, right, no special committee reports. Counselor Communications, what do we have, anything?
Well, I think we all probably want to acknowledge how great the fair was.
Oh, my goodness, Jeff.
I mean, it was outstanding, you know, this is the first time we've had, been able to do it after, you know, the COVID last year. So I thought it was absolutely excellent. We, we got some fantastic feedback from so many people. Weather turned out to be absolutely gorgeous. So I just, uh, I think that we all want to acknowledge that it was really nice to have our community together and for the most part, it was a very, um, positive. Experience and I think everybody had a great time, really great time.
Agreed.
I'd like to thank the Lions for all their hard work in putting that pair together and all the volunteer hours and the amount of. They do for the community, give back to all of us.
Haven't heard the attendance record yet, trying to get that. They, they thought they did, they just didn't, they don't know yet, but, uh, yeah, it's all good, good for all our, um. Organizations, our churches, fire departments, everybody, uh, you know, get some funding from, from selling their, uh, usually food and, uh. Helps all of us, a lot, a lot of good food or a lot of, no, all, all very good food. Quite the healthiest food now, it's all good, it's all very good for one, one week in a year, we can, we can eat whatever. So, yeah, it was great, it worked out well. Rain stayed away, which is magical for the Berlin Fair, no rain, really, well, one little shower. Couldn't get by without a little rain, right? That wouldn't be the Berlin Fair, but we're all pretty good, so anyone else? What do we got? Anything else? Comments, no? Okay, good, we'll close that and we'll go ahead and just, if we could do our acceptance and motion for our minutes. September seventh.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the September seventh. Minutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
abstain.
Abstentions, abstention. Okay, thank you, and, uh, so moved. And now we come to our executive session. Eight oh seven, uh, make a motion to go into executive session?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to go into executive session, pending claims, uh, Connecticut State Statute, Section one dash two hundred six, Part B, Strategy and Negotiations with Respect to Pending Claims. Mediation with Worthington Fire District, mediation with the Kensington Fire District, at a basket billing, and also the settlement of key equipment finance tax appeal.
Who are we inviting in this fine evening? We have our town manager, Corporation Counsel. Obviously, uh, Ray Drayma, uh, Mike Ahern.
Mike and Jim is going to be here too, right?
And, uh. Sorry. You're hiding, I know, I can't.
I don't have one, but it's okay.
Oh, okay, sorry. It's the mask, can't see, you know, can't see anybody. Bruce is invited in, of course. So we'll go ahead and take a, a moment to, uh, clear the room and to, uh. Oh, yeah, all those in favor of the motion? Do we have a second on that? Second. Second on the market, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved. Sorry.
So I, Jeff, you have the number?
Yes.
Dialing in and I just text us to, uh, Peter Russell as well.
Okay.
Calling in if he wishes to.
Thank you. Okay. Wait for the call in and, uh.